Currently nine AM, we are here for Tuesday, August 5th for our work session at the BOCC Chambers. We are currently live streaming on YouTube. If you can please join me and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let the record reflect that Commissioner Gamedos and myself are present today. William, is there anyone, any Commissioner on via WebEx right now? No, okay, thank you, sir. So the first thing we do have is item number one, we do have five items on the agenda today. The first one is to consider a two-year budget cycle. And we do have our Budget Analyst Supervisor Person, Lucio Lutral.
While Lucio is walking up, I'll, I'll take the credit and blame for how this conversation goes perhaps. But joking aside, what I've noticed in being in one-year and in two-year cycles in different organizations in the past is we just don't have the flexibility that you do with a two-year program. Lucio is gonna give us some more expertise on that. But some of the goals that have come out of the Commission here in my first 10 months have been set to align the budget with our strategic plan. And these are all fantastic things, but right now we have transitions in finance. The budget team is leaning in and helping out quite a bit there. We have some amazing fellows, Daniella, raise your hand. Daniella is here, it's our first Commission meeting, so she's gonna be helping out the budget team. Saying all of that, we can align with the strategic plan if we have a little more time to be proactive. So in addition to Lucio who's here today, I have spoken to the Treasurer, Mari Saw, took and talked to Ozma, Michael, the whole finance team for the most part, so this isn't... While Lucio is up here taking the blame today, I will say that we have full consensus from the team side. So I'll hand it over to you, Lucio, thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Gamedos, County Manager Andrews, Lucio Lutral with the Budget Office. And so today I have a lengthy presentation for you to discuss a biannual two-year budget discussion. It's really just one slide to highlight some of the advantages, disadvantages, and kick off the discussion for a two-year cycle. And so I think these are pretty obvious, but I'll go through them. The first advantage is improved long-range planning. It necessitates projecting revenues beyond just one year now, and we're already going in that direction. We're gonna begin projecting revenues for two, five, seven, 10 years. But what it will do is encourage departments to look beyond that one year. So what are they gonna need in two years? Present that to the Board. And as policymakers, it'll also encourage you to think beyond the immediate year. Also, it will increase efficiency. So as you know, our budget development process takes close to six months. So six months of meetings, adjusting budget, coming to the Board. And so it will free up some time in year two so that we can meet with departments and really dive into their budgets and their needs and develop plans for the future. And that goes hand in hand with the enhanced oversight. So we'll be able to work with departments on monitoring their budget, diving into it, doing some analytics, as well as providing additional training to them, because a lot of them have not had the training that we think they need. And so that is one thing that does come up, and they have communicated to the Budget Office, is they would like more training. So we would have additional time for that. And reduced workload. So eliminating, eliminating the need for annual review of routine matters will reduce the workload, freeing up time for some other priorities as well. On a disadvantage side, so year one is gonna take a little bit longer, it's gonna take a little more effort, really diving into what the next 30 months look like. And also, these two go hand in hand, reliance on forecasts and unforeseen circumstances. So we could project out the next two years, but we don't know what's gonna happen. There will be some unforeseen situations that occur in year two that we'll have to adjust for. But as you know, the budget is a living document, it's a living policy. So we come to the Board almost every meeting to adjust the budget as needs arise. And that's really what I have for today. On the drive to work this morning, I did have one thing come up that came in my mind is the timing of when we want to start this. Because we know that every two years we have a new, new elected officials coming into office. And so the timing of that, do we want to make sure that those elected officials are here to, to see through those two years? If that's the case, this would become effective a year from now, so for fiscal year '28. But I just opened this up for discussion amongst the Board and County Management.
Awesome, thank you, Lucio. Cool. Commissioner Gamedos? It's you and I. This is it, girl. Um, okay, I'm, I'm fully in support of this. I don't see why we would not want to do a two-year cycle. Starting in fiscal year '28 means that you have to start in the middle of '27 though, correct?
Yes.
So that elected official that would be newly into the office would still miss that cycle anyway. So you might as well start next fiscal year anyway, because they won't be elected until January... They won't be in office until January 1. And by that time, they're already in the middle of the budget cycle, their staff or the previous elected's already in it. You're, at that point in time, there's really, you're not gonna get them up to speed if they're newly elected in the middle of a budget conversation anyway, because we do start in November. So unless you're gonna take your budget cycle in the way that you do the onboarding differently for those electeds, it really doesn't matter when you start. As long as we understand that there's going to be certain departments, those elected departments that will have changes arise or could have different budget goals for those two years, we're gonna have to kind of play the field on that one and make sure that we understand what they're looking for. But as a county as a whole, I think this would be great. I would love to see long-term planning. I would love to tie it more with the strategic plan to make sure that there's a path forward. I'm down for this, I don't have any other questions really. We're just gonna have to give some grace to those elected department heads.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I, I have no issue with the two-year cycle as well. And I agree with what you said.
Yeah, I agree.
Chair, can I jump in? Because I know some of the things that do come up, and I don't want to stick my foot in my mouth when things are going well here. But I do want to say out loud for all the staff watching at their desk, the biggest challenge will be the bad habit that we have now of waiting to the end of the year to spend all of our money. So we can't even process that amount if we got in the habit of doing that, doing a two-year cycle. We just don't even have the capacity. So I think my biggest concern in going to a two-year is getting everyone trained in the habit of spending by that first year, by three months into year two. Because if we are waiting to the end of year two with that amount of money, we can't even process it quick enough. Lucio, anything you want to add on that, sir?
I would just like to add that logistically, we'll still have two separate fiscal years in this, the requirements per DFA. So we'll still have to go each year and submit something to DFA. And there will be some changes, like grant budgets, for example, capital and process. And there would be the cutoff at June 30th each year as far as spending because of how we have to submit the quarterly reports to DFA. But I agree with County Manager Andrews is we tend to, to leave that little bit of cushion in the budget till the end of the year because of the unforeseen circumstances that may arise. And we do see an increase in spending in the last quarter of the fiscal year. So we do ask departments to really dive in, begin planning. And if something unforeseen does come up, you know, we'll work with the departments to make sure that we could cover anything.
Yeah, that's the only thing that I really can foresee on that. Anything else? Awesome. Timeline, when do you want to put forth a resolution that would adopt it to your budget cycle?
We could, we could do it as soon as possible before we start it, this next budget process. So this fall, next month. So is there any recommendation from the Board?
I would suggest the first meeting in September. Let's get it done.
Hey Daniella, you want a cool project to work on?
Yeah, no, I don't see an issue with this.
Thank you.
Lucio, I think that was the easiest presentation you've ever... Sir, counterbossings. Okay, next up, we have... Where's my PDF? Okay. Discussion about appraisal and reappraisal valuation process. And we have our Appraiser here, Madam Appraiser? Assessor. Oh my God. Sorry, I just read a text, so it said Appraiser in it. Madam Assessor, welcome.
Good morning, Chair Sheldon Hernandez, Commissioner Gamedos, Gina Eugenia Montoya Artega. Actually accompanying me today is Ms. Tanja Hazen, she's our Chief Appraiser. A reappraisal project would technically fall under the Appraisal Department, which would, would be Ms. Hazen. I'm also accompanied by Mr. Ruben, oh, I'm sorry, Adrian Acosta, he's our Data Analyst Coordinator IT in our department. He does assist a lot in our department, seeing the numbers, like when we do turn stuff over to, to PTD or the Treasurer when we roll over the tax roll. So that's why. Also, we did have Mr. Ruben Reyes, he had to step out, but he should be back in a little bit. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Tanja Hazen, Chief Appraiser for the Assessor's Office.
Good morning. I wanted to first start by informing you all that Doñana County hasn't conducted a reappraisal in over a decade.
Really quickly, do we have a presentation or any documents for today?
It was, yeah, no, I'm sorry.
Chair, no, we do not. It was just basically kind of to explain the reappraisal project, a process. We actually met with Mr. Andrews, Ms. Neal, and I don't remember who else was in there with us. Oh yeah, Eric Alvidres from Finance. We met with them on July the 11th to kind of explain how this worked. After a meeting with Mr. Andrews, he asked if we could come and explain this to the BOCC. So we do not have a presentation. This is kind of just like a tip of the iceberg to kind of explain how the reappraisal project would work.
Okay, thank you.
So do you, would you like for me to also go into detail about the reasons why the reappraisal has not happened within the last 10 years? Or do you just want me to explain the process? I, I know you all had questions in your last work session.
I think for help, it was helpful for me to understand some of the history of it without getting too deep into weeds and also the benefits, pros and cons of hybrid vicious on-ground.
Yeah. So basically, what it boils down to is a reappraisal that, you know, is supposed to be conducted every two years. With our current staff right now, that would be impossible. We would have to have a reappraisal plan that, that includes probably about 20 appraisers that would be hired over a two-year term. I think that we also need to mention that, you know, our budget is also in the reappraisal fund is... We do not have the money to do a reappraisal, basically. So we would have to request, like we did in our valuation maintenance plan earlier, for, you know, some help in that direction. If you have questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. I just wanted to, you know, let you know that the Assessor's Office would not be able to conduct a reappraisal at this time with our current staff. We would either have to, like we had mentioned in the plan, you know, have a company from the outside conduct the reappraisal for us, or we would, I do have a plan for, you know, 20 appraiser plan to do a reappraisal in two years, but that would also need to have funding. So that's basically where we are right now with, with our reappraisal. Yeah, so everything that, that, that we do every day, our day-to-day work, which is, you know, sales, permits, protests, that type of deal, is what keeps our staff busy throughout the year. That we, if we were to have to pull them off to do a reappraisal, those day-to-day functions would, would be, you know, we wouldn't be able to complete those. And those are important for our office to continue to run. So it's important to understand that we would have to hire out for many appraisers to do a reappraisal, and we would also have to have funding.
Okay. So, thank you for that information. So when you say your current staff, does that mean the current hired staff with the vacancies or the current...
Even at full capacity, full staffed, even if we were fully staffed, it would be very difficult to do a reappraisal with them because of the duties that we have them doing day-to-day to keep the office running, which would be, you know, sales verification, permits, protest management, market analysis. We have mobile home departments and business personal property departments. So those keep us busy throughout the year. If we were to pull them off, it would, you know, that would, we, we just can't do that with our current staff, even if we were fully staffed. We would not be able to use them in a reappraisal.
Okay, so what is your plan then?
I'm, I'm sorry, Chair Sheldon Hernandez. So yeah, so basically what the office does every day, there is, state statute oblig, the Assessor's Offices are obligated to do a reappraisal project every two to four years. It used to be every two years, but realistically now they're looking every two to four years. What that does is it actually, we actually hire a crew or hire a company that comes in and does this for us. And we actually go back and touch every parcel in the county over a two-to-six-year period versus what we do every day. We constantly get permits on a daily basis or a weekly basis. So the, the appraisers that we have go out every day to check those permits for the new build, for the additions, whatever that might be. So the reappraisal project is actually going through the whole county and touching every parcel again to make sure that we're picking up all that lost revenue. Okay. And, and I believe that's why, like, after a meeting with Mr. Andrews, that he asked if we would come and explain, you know, to them, I mean, to you all, what we explained to them, is because there seems to be some kind of confusion that, you know, with the staff that we have right now, whether I'm fully staffed or not, a reappraisal project doesn't use your current in-house staff. It requires you hiring 20 temporary staff members or a company that will come in and do this for you.
But that's not the way that the state statute's written.
Yeah. Well, state statute reads that we're required to do a reappraisal.
Yeah, it's part of the job of the elected office.
But as part of that, the reappraisal fund is used to operate the reappraisal, which, which would, most of the time, we would have to have, you know, temporary, all Assessor's Offices throughout the state hire temporary appraisers to do their reappraisals. Unless, it's about a 5,000, 2,000, 5,000 parcel to one that, what it says, the IAAO standards. Let me show you, let me, hold on a second, I have that for you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Neal.
Yeah, so it would take about 20 appraisers for, to do all the field data collection, which would mean, you know, we would have to have vehicles and office space and that type of thing. And that's what the fund's used for.
Okay, so currently, what is your staffing capacity that you currently have hired?
Right. Go ahead. So currently, we're short two senior appraisers, we would, would actually focus more on the commercial side. And I'm short two residential appraisers.
So you've, so you've hired up nine people since the last time that we've gotten an update? Because you're short 13 staff members.
Talking total office, so we, and our doc techs on the front, that's usually a staff of six, we had four. We just, a young lady started yesterday, and we have another one starting here this week, if not next week. So that'll, that'll make that office fully staffed. But as far as on the appraisal side, we are short only four appraisers, two residential and two senior appraisers.
But how many overall in, in office?
In, in the Assessor's Office, we actually, when we're fully staffed, there's 52 of us, including myself and Chief Deputy Ruben Reyes.
Okay, and how many people are, how many vacancies do you currently have?
So currently, I have 31 people.
No, how many vacancies?
So 21.
Okay, so 21 vacancies. So technically, if you reclassified those 21 individuals, since you're already doing the day-to-day operations, you could technically take those 21 individuals, you could do 15, the Board could give you five extra positions to do the reappraisal process. With, yeah.
Wait.
Because you're currently doing the day-to-day operations with the current staff that you have hired. So technically, instead of sending this out, you could do it within-house if we just took those, we could say 15, you could do your two doc techs, your two senior appraiser levels, and you could figure out how to do it within-house, like many other counties do, within the state of New Mexico.
So normally, they hire temporary employees, they wouldn't hire full-time. But with that, you have the additional cost of, you know, vehicles, office space, the insurance, all the things that go along with those employees coming on. So I, I mean, I have a rough estimate of what that would cost to do a two-year appraisal. And I'm sure I've left out a few things, but, you know, we have that planned to look at.
So what does that cost then for a two-year appraisal?
It would be over $3 million.
$3 million over two years would be 1.5 million per year.
And that's not including our business personal property that we would be required also to. So that would be an additional cost of, what do you think? I mean, it depends on what we plan on doing with business personal property, so another $50,000 probably.
Okay, so... Okay, so currently, we do not have a plan, we just have the process, which we've already known the process.
We have a plan, we don't have the funds.
Okay, where's the plan at?
We presented that to you the year before and this year. I don't know that we gave you an in-house because we just, you know, hiring out, we just feel like with training and all the extra costs, it would be more beneficial to have a company that's, you know, familiar with our system, our CAMA system, do our reappraisal. That seems to be the most, you know, seems to be what we need to do. Because if we have to hire that many appraisers, by the time we have them trained and ready to hit the ground, it's going to be an additional two-year, I mean, or more.
But that's no different than if you have to get temporary staff to do this as well.
We would still have to train the temporary staff, which would take a longer time. Do you know what I'm saying?
I do.
Yeah.
So it's not that I don't understand what you're saying. What I don't understand is the fact that we haven't done this in a decade. We're now looking at it, but we don't have a solid plan to present to the board, whether it's in-house staff and/or sending it out. We don't have a quote, we're going off of numbers in our head. You know, we don't have an idea of the commercial because we were just trying to come up with a number. So I do have an issue that we are in, you know, over a decade, we've been asking for this for a plan, and we're not given a plan, we're given ideas of what is needed. And it's not the fact that we don't understand as a board, we do understand the value of a reappraisal plan. We do understand the value of filling your positions to make sure you are fully staffed. But what I don't understand is why, you know, we've been having these conversations since the first of the year, and we're not being given a plan. I would like to see the two options, what it would cost to do it in-house, how many people you need, temporary staff, full-time staff, what staff you have to put on this, because a staff of 52 is large. That is a very large staff for a department, and you should be able to allocate staffing to a reappraisal with your full current staff. Because over the years, I would imagine, because it's been done in-house before, that those positions, it's never been done in-house before.
Chair Shalja Hernandez, I want to just clarify something. So when Ms. Hazen actually said an in-house staff, that would actually be when we would actually hire an additional 20 temporary people, that that's all they focus on. It's not moving any of my doc techs, it's not moving any of my other appraisal staff, it's not moving any of my other positions to assist with this. Because what's going to happen to that, we have over 120,000 parcels throughout the whole county. So you're talking a staff of 20 people that would basically go boots-on-the-ground to the different areas and pick up everything, review everything that we currently have on that parcel. And so there is no way, so by Ms. Hazen saying that, you know, it would be in-house, it's not utilizing any of my 52 people. It's actually a new staff. And the reason we had brought Mr. Acosta with us, this is the way that Mr. Acosta came into the assessor's office. He was one of 14 people that were actually hired in 2012, and in addition to all the other staff that they already had. And these people were trained to go out into the field to actually pick up and review every parcel. Then when Ms. Hazen also says hiring out a company to do this, this is where we actually went to Tyler Technology, who is a company that we use for our CAMA system. And what they would do is, we actually have what are the footprints of aerials that were taken throughout the years. So what they do is, it's a group of people that, we don't have to train them, they already know how to use our CAMA system. They basically look at the photo that we have today of your property or my property, and they will look at it, what it was five years ago, or whatever they may be. So then they'll look and say, okay, on the assessor's office, we actually have the data from five years ago, but Gina has now built an addition to her house that we don't have on those, on the property record card. So then they get that information back to us, we pick it up and now add that, so that's now new revenue to the county.
Okay, so I'm good with using technology to assist with this, but what I do have a problem with is outsourcing all of this, saying that we need 20 extra people when there's a staff of 52. And that's kind of where my issue is. And to say that you're going to do this in two years, I commend you on that. I'd be okay with saying do it over four years and taking technology and doing it right and making sure that we are personally touching every single one of those properties. Now, the issue that is, and I kind of know this from work with the census, work with campaigns and anything else, when you give someone else the power to do things, they don't always do it right. So when you're contracting out with a third-party company to do this, or you're getting temporary staff to do this, you're not always sure that they're getting the numbers right, you're not always sure that they're actually going door-to-door and doing this. So when you bring them in-house and you're using staff that is Doñana County's staff, you're going to get more quality in your product, in my opinion. I might be wrong. But we saw it with the census, we've seen it on campaigns, we've seen it when we do other door-to-door operations here at the county. And then your staff anyway is going out there to double-check it because there's going to be a lot of people protesting these. So you're going to have to go out, you're going to have to double-check it anyway. But also, you said we have 120,000 parcels in Doñana County. My question, and what I'm kind of wondering is, is, you know, I just recently did an addition to my home a couple of years ago, and the reappraiser went out, they walked through the property with us, they went through and did everything, and my property evaluation changed because I did an addition, I pulled permits, I did everything by the book. So out of those 120, I'm wondering how many have been reassessed in the last five years by everyday processes that the county has through you? I would like to see what those are because your property evaluation, in my mind, could say, anything that's been reassessed in the last five years has a current reappraisal value. So then you take 120,000 properties minus what has been reassessed in the five years, gives you a lower number naturally. And then you can kind of start building off of that. And then when you incorporate technology that looks down, you can also say, look, we can hit these hotspots first that have done the additions that you can physically see, look, there's a building here that was not here five years ago. You would naturally see that you need to do those things. So as I'm saying this, like, your reappraisal plan can include all these things to where it's not going to take 20 people a year. It's not going to take two years, it's not going to take all these different things. But also, we need to set future department heads-up for success with the structure to do this over and over again. And I apologize that it's been a decade since this has been done, and you are kind of having to come up with a better idea of how to do this. But what I would like to see is that actual plan come forward, choices and decisions that we can make that reflect the budget as it currently is. That's not going to say we need $4 million tomorrow for the next two years, but what says we need 1.2 million the first year, or 1 million the first year, 1 million the second year, 1 million the third year, and then if we go into the fourth year, we can look at that budget then. I want to see what this looks like for the next three to four years, not what this looks like today based off of numbers that we don't understand. That's where I'm kind of getting frustrated with. But I do know that Ms. Neal has asked to talk 10 minutes ago, and I apologize, but Ms. Neal, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Wow.
Good morning.
Good morning. You had asked a question quite a while ago about whether statute allows for them to hire out for the process, and the answer is yes, it does allow for that. I've been through the statutes to determine what they are and are not allowed to do. And the statutes are not specific that they have to hire out or that they have to hire staff to come in. Either way, it just says that they are allowed to hire assistants to do that, which can be either an outside company to come in and help, or hiring temporary workers, or hiring a more permanent staff to take care of this.
Thank you.
Something I'd maybe add, what are our peer communities doing, similar-sized organizations throughout the region? I just did a quick scan of population, socioeconomics, so maybe we could look at Lee County, Texas, I'm sorry, Lee County, Santa Fe County, and then outside, maybe Colorado, Mesa County, Pueblo County, Larimer County, El Paso County, much smaller, a little more urban, but obviously we'd look out at our neighbors there, and Pinal County in Arizona, all very similar demographics, size and scale, so maybe we can revisit some of those and see what approach they're taking as well.
They use the IAAO standards of staffing for reappraisal, and we can include that in our report. The IAAO staffing formula, which, like I was mentioning earlier, is, it assumes that a mix, in mixed property types, a reasonable estimate for one appraiser is 3,000 parcels annually. So if you take that formula and use that, that's where you would come up with how many appraisers that you would need to do a reappraisal. And so with our current staff of 10 or 11 appraisers, we are, you know, we are understaffed to even get our day-to-day work done.
Okay. I understand that. To clarify, I was talking about hybrid versus in-house, how many years that goes about. Maybe we can clarification there. I think the pushback I've heard from even some of the other commissioners who are not here today is the hybrid route versus doing it in-house and laying eyes on all these properties. So that's, again, just some of the feedback I've heard from those that aren't here.
So really quickly, you said it's one appraiser equals 3,000 appraisals annually?
Yeah, it says one appraiser per 3,000 parcels annually.
Okay, and how many reappraisals are the staff and the current appraisers in your office doing annually now?
So the current staff, and this is just the appraisal staff, okay? It's not the whole 52 people. It would be about 97,000 real property accounts, 17 mobile home accounts, 17,000 mobile home accounts, and around 5,000 business personal property accounts.
Okay, but how many reappraisals is the current appraisers doing annually if they're supposed to be doing 3,000 a year, per your staff? So we are doing reappraisals every year, then?
We're doing our permits, our sales, the, you know, like you were talking about, the yearly permits, picking up new construction, verifying sales, doing the evaluation. So they are all doing over the allotted amount of parcels in those areas, just to keep current day-to-day functions going in the back, the appraisal department. So to go door-to-door to reappraise, that's a different, you know, that's what we're talking about with the appraisal.
So is that still the 3,000 parcels annually?
Yeah, that's what we should be using for our staffing for appraisal, just for the day-to-day work as well, because they touch every single account in the year for valuation, basically is what I'm talking about.
For evaluation or reevaluation?
No, valuation means, you know, what we are doing for that year in their valuation. If they're going up 3%, if they're staying on cost value, that type of thing. Reappraisal is doing a door-to-door, going to pick up new improvements.
Which is also that 3,000 parcels per year number?
I'm not really understanding what you're asking.
So are you using appraisals and reappraisals, are you intertwining those? Because you said that each appraiser, per your staffing report, the I, what did you call it?
IAAO.
IAAO. You said that appraisers can do, should be able to do 3,000 reappraisals per year. So that's reappraisals, or is that appraisals because?
That's what you would use to, when you're looking at just the day-to-day work, which is new construction, like I just explained, also to reappraise. I mean, that's about the number that you would use for one appraiser. That's just the number that they give us. 3,000 parcels, you should be able to work either in the day-to-day work or in a reappraisal, one appraiser. So, but the day-to-day work is a different story, I mean, different than the reappraisal. That's a door-to-door, boots-on-the-ground type appraisal.
So not to continue this conversation more than it needs to go, Commissioner Gómez, do you have?
This is my first time having to go through, you know, dealing with the appraisals and stuff, and so I thank you for the education. You know, I'm just kind of getting bits and pieces of what it's all about, but I do understand where Chair Saljo Hernandez is coming from, where we need a plan. So like, for me, I'm the same way, I would like to see how much it would cost, right, for the hybrid, let's say, right? How much is a third-party going to cost the county within the two- or four-year plan? And breaking it down yearly to know, okay, this is how much we need in the budget versus how much it would be in-house. I understand what you're saying about the vacancies, like currently with your staff right now, your staff is doing the day-to-day work that they need to hear, and they do go out there and they do appraisals, correct?
Yes.
So if you were to fill those vacancies, the 21 vacancies that you have, and if I'm wrong, clarify me, right, you know, those would be the temporary, no, they wouldn't, they would be full-time?
Right, and the 21 vacancies is not vacancies within the appraisal department, it's the whole entire assessor's office. So that's what I'm trying to explain, is that our appraisers, our appraisal department, I mean, we should have many more appraisers to appraise what we have in this county, but with us even being fully staffed, we would not be able to do a door-to-door appraisal plus our day-to-day work with the staff that we have. We would have to have many more appraisers to complete that, like 20, you know, like I explained, the 20, to do a two-year reappraisal. So the staff that we have currently would not be able to help us with the reappraisal and get the day-to-day work done as well.
Right, right, so the current people that you have right now would not be able to do that, but the additional people, no, why not?
So the 52, Commissioner Gómez, the 52, when we're fully staffed, those 52 people would not be able to do a door-to-door reappraisal. That is not, they already have their other jobs, which is to do picking up the permits that we have every day, their daily jobs, that doesn't include a reappraisal. That's why for reappraisal, as I was saying, that like Mr. Acosta, when he was hired, that they hired that whole crew, and that's what they were, they were trained and then sent out to actually go pick up every, touch every parcel in the county. I think they did that for four years? Yeah, about four years is what that project took. Unfortunately, that information that they actually went out and collected was never turned, the majority of that information was not even utilized to help the assessor's office because these people were not trained as they should have. They picked up the data incorrectly.
So really quickly then, you were hired to do the reappraisal in what year?
I mentioned 2012, actually 2011 when I started.
And how many people were hired with you to do that project?
About 15.
So your staff grew by 15 in 2011 to do a reappraisal project, correct? I mean, we can look, but it sounds like we gave you 15 people in 2011 to the assessor's office to get this done.
But it's a two-year cycle.
I understand that, but in 2011, they were hired to do this. Are those staff members and are those positions still in the assessor's office is my question?
No, they were temporary positions.
They were only to do the reappraisal project. Then, as of course, when, once the temporary assignment ended, we actually had positions that were open, like how now that I have vacancies, and that's how Mr. Acosta, that's how Ms. Janice Madrid, that's how Mr. Gil Avila, Ms. Isabel Salazar were able to become permanent employees to fill those other vacancies that the office had. But the 14 people that were hired, they were not hired as part of to fill the full office staff.
They were just temporary for the reappraisal project.
Yeah, these are temporary people that were brought in, no benefits, just their salary.
Have some of those been reclassed over the years?
Do we know?
I'm getting a head shake yes from others in the audience.
Mr. Luttrell. They were fixed?
Yeah, Mr. Chair Commissioners, County Management. So from my experience in the budget office, and we were actually having a discussion with our previous budget officer, is there were fixed-term positions in the assessor's office, which-
They were fixed.
And there had been reclassified over the years to full-time employees.
Thank you. Reclassify them back. Let's get this done, let's, if they were fixed-term- Let's, if they were fixed-term employees, the staff in 2011 grew by 15 individuals for the reclassification program.
Let me just reclarify. When I was first hired in the door-to-door reappraisal, it was temporary, no benefits. And about nine months later, we were fixed-term.
Thank you. So nine months later, you became fixed-term employees? That? Okay, so I hope you don't mind, Commissioner, I'm just gonna.
Mr. Chair, whenever you have a chance, I've been on the computer for a few minutes. I've been raising and and taking my hand out, but good morning.
Good morning. I didn't know we had hands on WebEx. Welcome.
Thank you. And whenever you have a chance, I'd like to ask a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Well, ask them now because I'm about to give homework.
All right, thank you. Good morning, Ms. Ortega and staff. So I came in late, and my apologies, but just following.
Ma'am, you broke up. Are you still there?
I'm understanding this correctly. We have 21 vacant in the assessor's office, is that correct?
21 vacancies, yes.
But that is not within the appraisal department.
But it's the assessor's office.
My question is, 21 vacancies within the assessor's department, is that correct?
Ladies? Vice Chair, yes, that's what they stated earlier in the meeting, was that they have 21 vacancies, four of which are in the assessor's department, two are doc techs, and the regular are, or the rest of them are.
So I have a GIS mapper, I have a title examiner, I have three appraiser assistants, I have an admin assistant. And yeah, the senior, and then the appraisers for the.
So wait, there's eight in the appraisers department? You said there's four senior-level appraisers, and then there's three assistants?
Appraisers assistants.
So that's seven. So you have seven in the appraisals portion that are vacant?
Yes.
Two doc techs?
Yes.
Keep going.
No, you don't, actually, and then I have in the appraisal department, we have two doc tech positions and a doc tech lead position.
Okay, so you have 10 vacancies in the appraisals department?
Yes.
You have two doc techs that are upfront?
Yes.
Keep going, you're at 12.
Admin assistant, GIS mapper, title examiner.
15.
Personal property supervisor. Is that 15, 16?
You're at 16.
So it's 16 positions, not 21, sorry.
So you're at 16.
Yes.
All right, so my question is, and and this doesn't have to do with the reappraisal so much. Well, it does to a certain extent. But are we advertising the positions, what efforts have been made? And I'll tell you, because in my mind, the assessor's office is responsible for bringing in the assessment for the property taxes. And if we are, whether it be 16 or 21 vacancies, what is being done to recruit, to interview, to hire? Do we need help on this? I'm really concerned about this, Madam Assessor.
Commissioner Chaparro, yes, so I actually, as of week before last, HR is working with me. I do have, or they were going to post my appraisers' positions. They're posting my GIS mapper position, my title examiner, we were actually just reviewing on the questions that we had. And then we were actually set to do the interviews for the appraiser assistants. So the only one that I have not focused on filling is my admin assistant.
So when when will the interviews be held for your appraisers? Because you're missing, depending on what I'm hearing, either seven or nine.
Commissioner Chaparro, as soon as HR can get those posted, and once they get them posted and the position closes, then we will set the interview. We actually did have, I'm sorry, we actually did have an appraiser that they did offer a position to, and because of the difference in pay, she was coming from another county, she did not accept that position. Oh, and then on the senior appraisers, sorry, we, I am working with HR as far as, because that, they haven't been able to fill that position long before I even came because of the pay. So we're working on actually an incentive to help try to fill those positions.
Okay, so I I understand there was issues or something hired back in 2011, and that's a long time ago. So, you know, it's, we really can't touch that to some degree, but we can move forward. So what's confusing me, I think, at this point is the difference between appraisers and fixed term. So regarding your appraisers, what I'm understanding is we're either missing seven or nine appraisers. Am I correct on that?
You are correct on that. Appraiser assistants and appraisers.
Okay. So the fixed term, we we're not doing that right now, is that correct?
Say that again, Madam?
So regarding fixed-term employees, they are different from the regular appraiser positions, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And and I apologize, because as I mentioned before, I came in late. So I have a, I have a question. I know that there are homes being built, and as the homes are being closed with the title companies, there is an appraisal attached to each home, because that's what happened to me. Is it possible to utilize that appraisal from a certified appraiser when the home is closed at a title company and save us time? Let's say they're closing, I don't know, 500 homes a year. I I'm not sure that's what the the numbers are. But if the homes are being closed and they're being appraised by a certified appraiser, are we not able to utilize that appraisal for value on property taxes and that thereby saving us time and money? I mean, the, a certified appraiser is trained, certified, licensed through the state of New Mexico.
Yeah, yes, ma'am. I I, we, so the process is, I think we're confusing the two. And and we do use the title companies' appraisals, and we are, we have affidavits coming in for sale prices of residential property. That's our day-to-day work that I'm talking about. So yes, we do utilize that. But what we're focusing on here is the reappraisal, which is a door-to-door appraisal that would pick up any structure that had been left off the tax roll for years. So that's what is required by the assessor's office and through state statute to, that that's what we're we're focusing on right now. If we focus on our vacancies right now, and what if we were fully staffed, that would still be just for the the day-to-day, you know, work. So those 51, 50 employees that are, if we were fully staffed, that is, that does not include all appraisal. So our appraisal department, there's different departments within the, you know, there's mapping, there's deeds. The appraisal department is is not going to be the total 51, you know, employees. So I think we need to take the focus off of what's going on with our staffing now and concentrate on our statutory requirement to do a reappraisal door-to-door every two years.
Madam Vice? Thank you for that response. Mr. Chair, if I may, thank you for that response. However, I I I'm not seeing it that way because I got a call from a developer that has lots up there that went to the, allegedly went to the assessor's office, and they have not been mapped or put into the system. And so for us to only focus on one thing, I think we have to focus on many things because if we're not picking up those lots, then we're not able to pick up property taxes from them. If there's a disconnect between the permitting, or rather, the subdivision, the permitting, and then what, I don't know what the term is, whether it's mapping or inputting the data for those lots, inputting the homes that are being built. So if we're not picking those up on a day-to-day operation, then we're going to fall further behind. And so to just focus on one area, I think, is incorrect. So I don't see it that way. So what I'd like to see, Madam Assessor, is a very solid plan coming from your office. I understand you have vacancies, and I'm certain that County Manager Andrews and HR will work with you very closely and very quickly to fill those vacancies and have those interviews be done so that you can become as fully-staffed as you can. But in the interim, on your day-to-day operations, that has to move forward with no disruptions, no interruptions. Because if we're missing properties or missing houses or missing whatever we're missing, then it's going to double your work. And when I get a a call from a developer saying that they're missing things, that they're going to the assessor's office and their properties aren't listed yet or not mapped yet, I don't know how true that is. But if we can have a a solid written plan as to how we're going to attack that, I would appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. And just to kind of also touch on what the Vice Chair said, I get that you don't want to focus on the vacancies, but how long have these vacancies been there?
But we're talking about the reappraisal.
I under, I I understand that, but we're also talking about how we got to where we are today. You you said that, how we got to where we are, how it's been a decade. But how long have these positions been vacant? Because it hasn't been a month or two or three months. There's been vacancies, I remember when interim County Manager Lopez was in that position, there was vacancies. And I remember there being appraisal positions on our job website. Because I I look at it three times a week. I know that they were there, but our numbers are not going up. And I get it, and that's a lot for anyone in staff to have to deal with vacancies and have to take on that load of work. But at the same time, when we see that there's inconsistencies, we have to ask those questions, or else we're not doing our job as the fiscal agents and the fiscal responsible people up here on this board. When we are allocating positions and money to those positions to get a job done, and then we don't see them filled, it is my job, the Vice Chair's job, Commissioner Gómez's job, to ask those questions. I understand this is about the reappraisal, but we've been having these conversations since the beginning of the year. And we need a plan. And that plan, and you keep on referencing Tyler, and I I respect Tyler, I know that they do great work. But the amount of money that you're talking about, this has to go out to bid. So no matter who you think that you're going to be working with, if that's the route that this commission chooses to go, it will go out to bid. And someone will bid on it, and whether Tyler wins it or another company, we follow procurement code as a board and as a county. So that's what we'll be doing. So saying that we're going with Tyler, we probably need to stop that conversation because that's all I've heard this whole meeting.
Chair Sheldon Hernández, for clarification, the reason that Tyler was using as an example is when we were looking for a company that could actually do a desktop version, they were the ones that we were able to reach out to. Now to say that we're going to go with Tyler, no, we understand, we've been working with Michael very, with other things, and I'm 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 about procurement. I'm about doing things the right way because prior to me coming in, a lot of things were not being done the right way. So when Michael came on and said, hey, we've got to go through the procurement process, we've got to go the right way, we don't object to that. I'm by the book, I follow the statutes. That's very important to me. And then again, it's like, so once again, I I'm I'm worried about my positions not being filled. But as far as the reappraisal, that's a totally different, it it, you know, not saying that even if I was fully staffed, we still are going to need to hire people to do that reappraisal project, whether it's a temporary 20 people that we hire, or whether we hire whatever company it is to do that. The reason that we'd also mentioned Tyler is because they're the ones that you, we currently use for our CAMA system, which would understand, you know, that would make it a lot easier. So no, so the reappraisal does need to happen, whether or not that I was fully your staffer or not, would not have affected the reappraisal. And then back to, we keep talking about, you know, how the budget, that's where I've come to the commission on several occasions, to say that's what the 1% was for. Every year that we as a county collect the revenue on the property taxes, 1% should be put aside separate from my general fund. And over the years, for whatever reason, they have co-mingled, and my 1% has become my general. That's why that 1% should be there waiting, not being invested, so that when a reappraisal needs to happen, the assessor should be able to come to the commissioners and say, I need to do a reappraisal project, this is what we're thinking it's going to cost, we're going to have to hire 20 people, or we hire an outside company, whatever that might be. And that would be up to the commission to say, well, yes, you have the $12 million or whatever it might be that should be there.
So I'm actually glad you brought that up, and now that we're having these conversations about 2011, 2011, 2011. What I would imagine, just hearing this conversation, is that that 1% fund went to those 15 fixed-term employees that were put as full-time, and that 1% fund has just been paying their salaries for the last 14 years, is what I would imagine. And we'll never know because, well, actually, is there a way to find out? Thank you. Let's get that information, let's bring it back to the board so we can actually make sure that that's what happened. Because just from hearing these conversations and from having a historian over there.
Well, I, we can tell you from, I can tell you that the 1% fund, the is, I mean, the general fund is only a few salaries in there. The 1% fund has been funding the appraisal off department. All the expenditures of the day-to-day should not be coming out of the reappraisal fund. It should be a general fund expenditures, and that's what we have visited about.
I hate to say this, but I've talked to Lucio about this in the budget team, and the county manager, and interim Lopez about this, because we've been hearing about this for two years, about the 1% fund being misused. The only thing is, is that you all control your budget, and you make expenditures out of that 1% fund, year after year. It's not our board that is allocating where that 1% fund goes. It's your staff, not us.
No.
We're not doing that. We have not done that.
Right.
That 1% fund is going towards the employees, it follows state statutes. We got a letter from DFA saying that it's used properly. That conversation about the 1% fund being used improperly needs to stop because it's false. We've gotten the letter, and I hate to cut you off because you're a member of the staff, I apologize. But that is a false narrative. That 1% fund has been used according to your office and what, Madam Assessor, you choose to use it on. We are not sitting here saying, look at this budget line item, it should come out of here. That is something that you sign off on over and over and over again. That is what you choose to do with that 1% fund, and it is following state statute. And what was it, Lee County or Eddie County versus the state of New Mexico says that it's able to be used for? We're following state statute, we're following DFA guidelines. I don't really like hearing about the 1% fund being misused.
So what I would like to say is that I believe what should have been said is that in the last 10 years, the, you're right. The department should have requested transfers into the general fund. But the fact of the matter is, is that the reappraisal fund is that is, has been utilized for expenditures that should not have been used. And that's not the commission fault, that is the fault of, you know, we, it's been 10 years.
The assessor's office, yes.
Yes, we should have requested our budget in a different format. But the fact is, is that right now, the reappraisal fund is, does not have the funds to do a reappraisal. And that's why we stand here with this problem of not having the budget to do a reappraisal. We do, and we've spoken to different people within the county recently, and we've all figured out that it does need to be requested differently in our budgets. But the fact is, is the reappraisal is a stat, we have a statutory requirement to do a reappraisal every two years, and we do not have the funds for that. So that's where we are. And the dilemma is that. So, you know, I know you want a plan, and I I I believe that that's something that you should receive. But what we have, where we stand right now is the last two years, our valuation man, valuation maintenance plan has been, has not been approved by the commission, if I'm, if I'm correct. And so we're. And so we're, we're in a spot right now that if we go another year, we're going to, we could possibly run into some problems because Property Tax Division wants us to do a reappraisal.
We're ready for the plan. Get us a plan and we'll deep dive in another work session, go over the plan and come up with solutions with you all.
Yeah, I keep hearing, basically, we need to jump on reclassifications of positions that were either reclassed in the past or we can completely reutilize them to get through this season and move that back after the reassessment process. Kind of looking around and trying to sum up everything because I know we have a few other topics here. Would you like us to consider that, Chair, and revisit maybe a month from now?
Commissioner Gómez, I'm indifferent.
Or Vice Chair.
Pardon me, you cut out Mr. Andrews, and I didn't hear what the question was.
Sure, I was just trying to summarize everything that we've heard so far, looking at everything comprehensively, utilizing the positions that are vacant, reclassing as necessary as early as the next board meeting, and having a full-fledged plan back before you all in a work session a month from now. Does that sound like a good plan?
I, I think it's a very necessary plan. And before we move forward, my last question, if I may, Mr. Chair. So because of the report that I received from a developer, Madam Assessor, is the allegation or whatever we want to call it, that mapping is behind on lots and possibly housing?
Vice Chair Chaparro, Mr. Ruben Reyes, Chief Deputies here, who over actually sees the GIS department, and he can actually explain, we just recently even had a meeting with Community Development in reference to how they are already issuing out these permits. Even though the permits are being issued out, we're not able to give those account numbers until the, yeah, I'll let, I'll let Mr. Reyes explain that.
Good morning, Commissioner, Chair, Santiago Gómez, Commissioner Susana Carey. Yeah, Commissioner Chaparro, what happened is we met with Community Development, we're on, what we try to do in the assessor's office is have a two-week turnaround when we, when we draw our lines into our parcel map. As you know, the assessor's office is responsible for that. A meeting with Community Development, with the City of Las Cruces and with the development, Community Development here at the county, is, they have a practice of approving the preliminary development plan. So what happens is, if the city approves or the county approves the development plan, they get, they start issuing permits for these houses to be built. Unfortunately, the assessor's office cannot draw those lines until that plat is actually filed in the clerk's office. So if the preliminary plan is approved, let's say, two weeks prior or a month even prior to that plat being filed in the clerk's office, you will see and the developers will see that the houses are being built without our lines being drawn on the parcel map. That's because as soon as they get a permit, they're starting to build. We have to wait by state statute for the plat to be filed in the clerk's office for us to draw those lines on there. So there will be some lag time. Yes, we've been trying to catch up, there's a lot of building, we've gotten a lot more recordings this year than we have more, but we're, we're right in that two, three-week turnaround. The areas that we're looking at are, are the bigger subdivisions that, that we're trying to knock out as quickly as possible, not to say that the smaller subdivision aren't, is as important. But where the lag time on our parcel lines are, is if that preliminary subdivision plat or development is pre-approved and a permit is issued, we cannot file or draw those lines until the plat is filed. Also, if there's a discrepancy in the plat, a signature is missing or there's something wrong with the dimensions, we do notify the surveyor to correct that. If they don't correct it, we will process it within a two-week period as well. So there's a little bit of leeway there. So apologies to the developer that's not seeing it. If you can give me the, the area that he's looking at it, I will personally look at it and will, we can respond to you or him and what's, what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. As you know, District Four is growing very, very rapidly, and then we're going to start looking at that Mesa Grande development for Royal Crossing. And it's going to be thousands of homes, and, and so that's my concern that we lag behind because if we're missing a year of appraisals on lots and homes that are built, that's thousands of dollars that the county is not able to recoup.
Agreeable. Also, I'll give you a perfect example real quick on that note. We had a subdivision that was filed on December 31st where we were closed, but the city was open. They came in next year, which was January 2nd of this year to file that plat. Unfortunately, that's past our site of state, so a lot of people will have to understand that if they file after the site of state of January 1st, that will be on for the next year. Not saying that we didn't pick it up and have it on record, but you won't see it on the tax roll until the current year because after January 1st, everything goes on for the next year by state statute.
Thank you.
Chair had to step away for a moment to take a call.
So may I have, may, may I ask another question? I'm on a roll, everyone. County Manager Andrews, how quickly can, can the HR department get together with Madam Assessor to start addressing the vacancies and what is needed? Because I remember meeting with Madam Assessor and Mr. Reyes, I think it was last year under interim manager Lopez, and, and we were going over pretty much the same issue, lack of staff, lag in reappraisal, and I want this to be successful. I think all the commissioners want, Gina, and Ruben, everybody wants you to be successful. We're all a team. But we need to be able to get on the same page, and we need to be able to get moving very, very quickly. This is an issue that has been happening for a while. So, Mr. Andrews, I'm, I'm putting the onus on you. How quickly can we get to the hiring process and the interviewing process in your?
Absolutely. I didn't want to cut you off, Vice Chair, go ahead.
No, I'm done, thank you.
Okay, I'm using lifelines here from the DIES and communicating with HR, and they're saying they can meet right after this meeting and make it a priority immediately. Simultaneously, Lucio has been reaching out to me here, and we can help and assist with that RFP process if, if you needed, the finance team will lean in and help. And anything we can do to help expedite this and move this forward for you. Commissioner Gómez, I know you had a question.
Yes, if, if Vice Chair is, is done, I don't want to take her spotlight right now.
No, I am, I'm sorry, I just can't hear what's going on, and I can only see one person at a time, so I'm not aware of who's speaking, thank you.
Thanks. So I, I just want to know, is the current budget that we just approved, that 1% fund for the assessor, going forward and now with this budget and going forward, it, or is it going to be utilized just for reappraisals only now? No. Gina says no, and he says yes.
Commissioner Gómez, so this is something that we had started working with Lucio and will continue to work with because the way that our 1% is currently, it's still not set up to just focus on the reappraisal. We do have several salaries that come out of there, we have a lot of office expenses, and that should be for reappraisal. But this is something that we, we did sit down and we have talked to Lucio, and we're, you know, still willing, because we want this, we want this straightened out. Our goal is, as, you know, Chair Sheldon Hernández had said, you know, that we have a, you know, he wants a plan. Our plan is that we want that reappraisal, we want to be done with it, and we want to just get our budgets straight. We want our 1% separate from our general fund and for the 1% to be used as it was intended for. That's the plan, that's what we had come and asked for last year, that's what we came and asked for this year. It's very important, even in the meeting that we had with Mr. Andrews and Eric and Ms. Neal, is what are the benefits of doing a reappraisal? Whether or not there's a benefit or not a benefit, it's a state, it's a statutory obligation that this reappraisal does have to happen. So that's our goal. We know as an assessor's office, by this reappraisal happening, there's going to be a lot of revenue that the county has been missing out on because in 2016, when they did go to the new CAMA system, a lot of the information didn't convert over. So a lot of our outbuildings aren't on the books. There's a lot of stuff that's out there that's not being taxed, and that's the purpose of the reappraisal, is to touch everything and to make sure that everything that should be taxed is being taxed fairly inequitably.
Thank you. So, so then you're working with budget to hopefully reassess that general fund and how it's being utilized in the 1%. So the salaries that are coming out of that 1%, like you said, hopefully they'll start going into that general fund, correct?
Yes, so actually in working with Lucio, we were able to move, but the majority of them, right, Lucio?
That are still in the 1%?
So, yeah, when I first started, I think I had like 17 positions that were being paid at another 1%. And then now in working with Lucio, we've been able to move all but nine of them over. And there should be no full-time salaries coming out of that 1%. So yeah, it's just continuing to work with Lucio to get that, you know, cleaned up and straightened out and get the two, you know, I know we, we kind of still sit on opposite sides of what that 1% is for. I know DFA did give their input, but, I mean, we have Ira that's chimed in, so, yeah, it's just, it needs to happen. We need to get these straightened out, we need to get the 1% straightened out, we need to get the general fund straightened out, and we need to have that reappraisal done.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, really, real quick, and then, Mr., Commissioner, Vice Chair Chaparro and Andrews, we actually have, HR's been really, really good. So like I said, I'm working with Erica, she's going to get that GIS mapper position posted, the appraiser positions, she's getting posted. So that, that's gotten a lot better. The big thing is just trying to work out that incentive pay to try to get some of those senior appraiser positions filled because what we as a county offer, people aren't, it's a big responsibility and they're not taking the positions.
To clarify, because I'm communicating with HR, and I think they're listening from their office, so I'm trying to be the bridge here. So it sounds like the appraiser, senior appraiser, doc tech and admin assistant have all been advertised. I don't know how recently, can you clarify that for us?
So yeah, it, it's been earlier this year.
Okay.
That all three of those positions were advertised.
Was it low response, or what, what was the?
Well, so like, for example, my admin assistant's been ready to be interviewed. I just, being that I was trying to work out getting the appraisal position, to me, that's more important in the office. I would want, not want my supervisors to feel like, oh yeah, I was willing to fill my admin assistant position and not their appraiser. So I have felt that it's more important that I get the appraisers filled, the appraiser assistants filled, the title examiner, we've struggled to get that one filled, as those are, I mean, not that my admin assistant position is not important, but I'm not going to put myself at the front of the line when I can be at the end.
Sure. Yeah, thank you. And it sounds like the appraiser closed on 6:15, so that was pretty recent, but I'm communicating with them now, they'll make themselves available, we can lean in and help get through the process from the finance, HR standpoint, and certainly any assistance you need with the RFP process, and we can look at a work session about a month from now.
And, Mr. Andrews, they actually reposted that appraiser position again, or they will. Like I said, if it wasn't this week, next week, I guess Erica will have it posted.
Okay, thank you.
So do we have action items of next steps? Do you want to read those again, Mr. Andrews, since?
Sure, I'm kind of just spitballing here, sir, but it sounds like we're going to connect with HR right after this, immediately, to move forward with those positions, reclassifications as needed, and also budget can be involved in that process to make sure we're answering any questions that you have. Lucio, it sounds like there's additional concerns on how to separate and clarify that 1% account so we can lean in there and make sure we're in a good place, and revisit all of this with the board a month from now. And I know the chair was saying all those comments regarding the RFP process, and I know that was your intention, but if you do need assistance with that RFP process, let us know.
Okay. And I, I would like the history of those 15 positions from 2011, I do want to know where they came from and where they're at as well, just because I want that information. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners.
We do have item number three, discussion on possible projects for Road Initiative Four.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioner Gómez, Stephen Lopez, Assistant County Manager, and I'm joined by our interim Director of Public Works, Dan Sombro, and I apologize, Commissioner Chaparro, we didn't realize you were going to be online, so your printed documents are sitting here on your chair. Trust that we will get you those electronically later today so that you have a full opportunity to review, but at any point, if you have any questions or want us to repeat anything, please let us know. So the Roads Initiative Four items, there's a large 11 by 17 sheet that has 26 roads that have been identified through various processes for consideration for Roads Initiative Four. Of note, there are, there's one here that the Roads team, from an operational standpoint, really would make a difference in how they function because it is one lone segment out in the middle of the county, and they have nothing else they do around it. So they are constantly having to haul equipment out to serve as this one small stretch of road. Getting that paved would alleviate that back and forth of equipment and that loss of work time that they could then spend on other areas. There are also a number, if you look kind of towards the middle of that chart, there is a column for whether or not it's a private road, realizing that the next item for discussion will be private road adoption. I just wanted to point that out. The very first one is being recommended by the Road Team for adoption by the county as part of the Roads Initiative Four and then paving. That's Fox Road up in Commissioner Chaparro's district. That road is a big connector up on the east mesa, and it makes sense for Fox Road then to be adopted by the county and to really improve the flow up in that area. The next one down is being recommended by the engineering team, that Saddle Mountain Road. And that is a dead end off of Hornada. It is a dirt road, and as you'll see in the items that we bring forward on the private road discussion, it still needs to be studied as to whether it meets metrics, is that fair to say?
Yes, sir.
And then the remaining private roads have been recommended for consideration by the utilities team because we have utilities under the road, and because those are private roads, they are not being maintained and it's actually causing damage to our manholes in those areas, which probably means that as we move forward with utility projects, we need to probably consider whether we put utilities underneath private roads in the future, or if we do those off to the side of a private road so that they are not being driven over, or how we consider those utility projects. So right now, the total estimate for what you're seeing in front of you, those 26 roads, is about $11.2 million because some of these will require engineering work to look at them. That is a best guess estimate from Dan's team. And Dan, anything you want to add to this?
Number, like 11, all the trails, Pueblo and all those, and Sunland, we have, after even a nuisance rain, we always have cleanup over there, and we've done the first, they're stacked. So we've done the top two roads, and it helped a lot, and this is just a continuation of that project to get curb and gutter in and, and new pavement inverted, so there's better drainage flow, and we're not taking in sand and debris onto the road that we have to clean up.
Nice. And those are going to be those?
The Westmoreland ones?
Yeah, so all the drainage, no curbs, so that's going to help keep a lot of sediment and debris out of the road. Nice. I'm so happy to see Fair Acres on this, you have no idea.
And one thing I do want to point out is the column next to the private road, which is labeled PCI, that stands for Pavement Condition Index. And you will notice that the ones that do have numbers are down as low as 46, 41. There are some that are in the 7. There are some that are in the 70s, but they need work on them before they fail completely. Those are the trails that Dan just mentioned. And then there are a lot of zeros on Pavement Condition Index. That's because they have no pavement. Those are total dirt roads.
Okay. So with the PCI index, the higher is?
Is supposed to be good, up to a scale of 100. So 100% means we just paved it.
Okay. And then here at the county, what is our policy on, what number do we want to be at?
We would appreciate that answer, Mr. Chair. That is a policy decision for the board. And that is something that we've highlighted for the next item on the private road adoption because we need a standard also for when we adopt a private road. It should be at a certain level. And so we'll have that ongoing discussion. Ideally, we should be above a 70%. Think of it in terms of a school grade. We don't want to be below a C condition on our roads in the county that are paved. But realizing that almost half of our roads in the county inventory are dirt and already have a zero, that is a continual challenge we as a county will have of balancing, bringing in pavement to the dirt roads versus just continuing to grade where we can. And I do want to point out, we shouldn't pave some of our dirt roads because from a cost benefit review, it is not financially appropriate for us to spend millions of dollars on a road that services one or two homes. Not that those people are not important. I am a mile down one of the county's roads that is dirt. And with my two neighbors, we do not generate the traffic necessary to keep the pavement in good shape. If pavement is not driven on regularly by sufficient traffic, it will crack on its own just from temperature extremes. Even though when you fall on it, it doesn't feel soft. Hot mix asphalt concrete is a pliable surface and it needs that regular traffic to be massaged and stay pliable.
Cool. Questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I have a question. So if we were to decide on the standard of the PCI, how many roads, I'm going to say, let's do a B, are below that 80%?
Do you know offhand?
I would say below a B would be about 50% of the paved roads that we have. And a C and below, we're looking at about a third of the roads that we have.
So at a 70% below, we're looking at 30%?
Yes.
And that, considering we have 700 miles of paved roads, you're looking then at roughly 500 miles of pavement that needs either resurfacing or a total rebuild to get it back up to where we need to be. At a total rebuild cost, you're looking at, for a residential road, roughly $2 million per mile. So that would be a billion dollars if we had to rebuild all that. It's just not financially feasible for the county to do that, which is the challenge that we've had and why the adoption of private roads that are not up to county standards is such a financial concern.
So just for my own clarification, that $2 million per mile, that's the road paved? Does that consider?
That's, that is removing whatever's there. In some places, Dan's team's done a great job. They will go in and actually disc the existing surface that is there and use it to help build up what we call the base course. The base course is what carries the actual weight of the vehicles. And the pavement really protects the base course from people doing donuts, from rain, from ice, things like that. And so while that pavement on top is important on the condition, we've got to make sure there's adequate base. So they start with making sure either disking in or bringing in base course to build that up. That may be putting in curb and gutter. That is definitely then going back in and putting in the surfacing and any striping that needs to occur.
So curb and gutter, but no sidewalks?
Correct, that is not sidewalks in most cases. In some cases, it makes sense. That's actually something Dan's been looking at up on Peachtree Hills right now in partnership with the City of Las Cruces because they connect on each end of Peachtree Hills from where the county segment is. And they already have sidewalks or walking trails. So that is something that was built into that project just a couple of months ago. So that is one of the rare exceptions. But we do not have sidewalks usually in county roads because of the rural nature.
So my other question is on, with the, say at 75%, what type of roads are we looking at that would be at 70%? Between 75, 70%? Like what, what kind of upkeep do they need? What kind of damage do they have?
Most of those roads would have alligator cracking. And they would also have like normal cracking, like longitudinal cracks and stuff on them. So most of the damage would be cracks in the, in the surface on those. That's what would determine it. And also the amount of asphalt that's left in the, in the pavement between the gravel and stuff that sticks the gravel together to make the pavement.
Okay. And so say, you know, we don't get to it for another two, five years. What more damage could we see with that?
What we do as the road department is we chip seal. So we put another layer of asphalt and then we put gravel on top of that, which sticks to the asphalt. We got to let that cure. And within six, seven months, we go and put a fog coat of asphalt. And that gives us another anywhere from five to 10 years of life on that. And we normally do about 15 to 20 miles of chip sealing to help extend the existing pavement's life.
Okay. And so I was looking at the list here, and of course, I don't know all the roads. There was a discussion that we had some time ago where a, some people came up and they were concerned about that little piece, right? Is that in this?
Oh, yeah.
I think it's in Las Alturas, was it?
Yeah.
The little piece in Las Alturas.
Yeah, there's, I don't know the roads.
It goes like this, Stephen? Don't you remember that?
It was on the plat.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It goes like?
Dan does.
We were approving a plat and it was that, yes, there was an outline piece because I asked, you know, so there's a county road and a county road that come together. But then there's this little piece where they both connect that the county doesn't own.
No, ma'am, that was not included on this one. This was, if I believe correctly, was by the Tortugas Dam off of Las Alturas and stuff. It's not included in this. There's an arroyo crossing that would need to be designed on that one. So that would, a arroyo crossing, like the one we have now that we're redoing is like 1.1 million on that one. That's already ours that's getting, that's getting designed and done. So it's about 500,000 for the design and about 1.1 million is the engineer's estimate to get it rebuilt and stuff. So that was, that was not included in this.
So that was Peter Herden, Catlin?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And now that you mentioned Peter Herden, now I know exactly which one you're talking about. Thank you.
Yeah, I told you the one that goes like this, Stephen.
For the vice chair's benefit, since she can't see all of our hand motions, it's the one that, that's an arc somewhere in the middle of the county.
I recall that. And if Commissioner Gomero's or whenever she's done, if you can alert me.
I am done, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Chair?
Yes, Vice Chair.
All right, so I remember that piece of road, but I'd like to regress to what Mr. Sombro was saying. First of all, County Manager Andrews, I'd like to really amend Dan. He took me on a little gluxie a few weeks ago. And I can tell you, he and his team are exceptional. They know the roads, they know what needs to be done. And I am so glad that I was able to spend about an hour and a half with him because the expertise, in my opinion, is unmatched. So Mr. Sombro, thank you. I give you full credit. And in talking about roads, I'm glad that Peachtree is, in that area, is also included because as I mentioned to Dan and Stephen, I think I lost my muffler out there when I was driving around. But we also need to understand that in that area, the city's about to build another affordable housing complex and it's coming in the next year. They allotted, I can't remember how many million, maybe 3.4 million. So that's going to add an additional 700 apartment units in that area. And I don't mean to say this in a rude way in any, any way, but has the city approached the county in annexing that part of Peachtree? And would that be a good idea to let them have it?
Madam Vice Chair, the city has not approached the county, but the county has approached the city and they laughed in the meeting that Dan and I were at in discussing that because it also affects not just Peachtree, but the intersection of Peachtree and Mesa Grande. And on Mesa Grande, there is a house that, that sticks out into what would be the extension of Mesa Grande connecting to Peachtree. We will continue to encourage the city to consider that. But in the meantime, I believe Dan's already got the contractor lined up and ready to go for the paving of Peachtree. Is that correct, Dan?
Yes, sir, that is correct. We're waiting on the finalization of the plans and Smith and Aguirre will, will do it, will be the contractor of record on that. And they're ready to go on that also.
Thank you for that response. But wouldn't it be advantageous perhaps to have one more meeting with the city? Because that, that street right there, I mean, it's nothing between the city and the county boundary. And if they're adding that additional, so 700 houses times average of two to three cars, we're looking at 2,400 cars. And I don't know how many times they travel. I don't know what the traffic count is up there. But that's really going to put a lot of pressure on that road. And as Mr. Sombro knows, when he took me over to Montevista School, people are going around the desert, they're crashing berms, they're making their own roads. And I think that's going to encourage more of that happening with 700 additional apartments. I mean, I'm really concerned about that. Kids are going to be at risk.
We will follow up with the city one more time.
They're going to be walking. Pardon me?
Vice Chair, this is Scott. We will follow up with the city one more time on that item and see if there's anything we can talk through for synergies there.
Thank you. So let me see, I had another question and I'm looking at my writing. Okay, regarding Saddle Mountain and Fox Road, what is the cost for Fox Road and Saddle Mountain, please?
Saddle Mountain is just under three quarters of a million dollars. I'm sorry, Fox Road is just under three quarters of a million dollars. Saddle Mountain is just over half a million.
Thank you. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair, for now.
All right, thank you, Madam Vice Chair.
Mr. Chair, I do have another question.
Yeah, of course.
So here on these roads that are unsurfaced, can you explain to me what's going to be done for that?
Yes, ma'am. What the contractor will do, will grade the road for drainage first. The, the, the existing dirt, the existing soil, he'll, they'll grade it to plan for drainage. After they grade it to plan and compact it, then they will come in with six inches of base course and that they'll lay down that base course, which is, base course is a material that is mixed with, with large rock, small rock, so it interlocks. So it provides a good base. So they'll lay six inches of base course, compact that. Then they'll put in the curb and gutter. And then they'll put in the pavement surface, the actual asphalt, which would be two inches of asphalt.
Thank you.
So on all these private roads, how many have, or not on the private roads, but all the roads overall, how many need utility lines moved?
Yeah. On all, all the roads that are paved, we're going to have to raise manholes, we're going to have to raise valve boxes, which is normal.
Okay.
Fox Road, the private road, the connector, will may require a little bit of, of relocating of utilities, utility boxes and stuff like that. So I put in a small fund for that. But what we'll do in the design is we'll try to minimize that.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay. So any other questions, Commissioners? I wish we had a full commission here today because this is, this is a big one and I apologize that we're not all here. I mean, I apologize because this is going to come before as a resolution and there's probably going to be more questions. So I apologize, but I think this is a good direction. I mean, I, I don't know what else we can really say until the whole board's here, unfortunately and fortunately, all at the same time. But I think this is a good start. Do we want to start on the private roads? And then if we have other questions on this, we can come back?
That sounds great, Mr. Chair.
Okay, let's do that then.
So there are two items before you in paper. One is the resolution on adoption of private roads, draft. And the other is a road rating worksheet. That road rating worksheet will become very important as we get towards the bottom of this draft resolution. What we are recommending the board consider is a two-part private road adoption resolution. The first is if the county deems it is necessary for the county business, for public safety, like with Fox Road that Dan just mentioned, then that would follow one process and that would use that road rating worksheet. The second is if the owner of a private road or owners want the county to adopt it, that would be a different process. As we tried to work through the various resolutions passed by prior boards, it became apparent that there are, there's a need for those two different processes for private road adoption. In part because sometimes in the past, owners of private roads wanted the county to adopt them and then also wanted the county to pay for their private road. So they were making money off of the county adopting the road at their request. And that's just not appropriate in our view. Totally, if the county is, is wanting to, needs to adopt a private road for the good of the county, then we would absolutely need to pay for, for that. So as we bifurcated out the process, what we have down is for a private road, the private road would need to meet the requirements of the current UDC, whatever's in effect at the time, for whatever type of road it is, whether it's an arterial, a collector or residential road. There would need to be at least a 50-foot right-of-way for residential roads, since that is the one that most often the county has asked to adopt. That's the only one that we specified. The others are already identified in the UDC.
So with that, Stephen, I'm going to ask questions as we go.
Sure.
I'm not going to take notes right now. With the 50-foot right-of-way, which we saw at Firehouse as well as Firehouse Road and the Trace?
Tres Caballos, right.
I literally blocked that out of my mind, if that tells you anything. With those, the county had to go in to acquire right-of-way, are we going to mention the way of acquiring right-of-way in this private roads adoption as who is the burden of that process?
The, item number F specifies that they have to, is it F? Hold on.
Yeah.
Basically? Basically, the private, the, the owners of the private road are the people whose homes are along that. They're going to have to deed that property over to the county. Now, we're, we're not going to purchase it like we did with Tres Caballos from, from the people who want us to pave their own road.
Perfect.
They're getting value from the county. I'm not sure why we started that process many years ago.
I would agree.
Item, yes, ma'am.
Sorry, educate me. I, I keep hearing right-of-way, and I kind of have an idea, but I want to make sure I have the right idea. So if you can explain the right-of-way for me and those that don't know.
Certainly, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Gamaros. The right-of-way is that area of, of property that the public has a right, hence the term right-of-way, to utilize. We often are not paving that entire area. We may only be paving 25 or 30 feet of that, but that does provide space then for the common utilities, for gas lines, water, sewer, electrical lines, telephone lines, internet cables, and things like that to go along the sides of the roads. We're trying to get away from having all those things underneath the asphalt, because when they need to make repairs, it obviously causes problems with the road surface. So that is what is in the public right-of-way. And as you questioned earlier, that's where also sidewalks or trails would go, is in that, that public right-of-way. Does that help? Okay. Anything you want to add on that, Dan? Okay. So item C is all underground utilities for the area must already be in place beneath the road or must be placed in the future outside of the paved section of the roadway. That is already addressed in the, the UDC. The roadway must have been paved within the past 10 years and had an application of an approved sealant within the last three years. And we are specifying in the draft resolution that this will be verified by a core sample taken by the county in order to ensure that it, that's what's really there. And that's something that has happened sometimes in the past, but not on an always basis. And we just did that when somebody asked about a private road in the Chair's district. And we discovered that while from the surface, it looks like it was paved as a roadway, it was actually paved to parking lots standards, not roadway standards. So we think that is going to be crucial going forward, that not just what's on the plans says it meets the UDC, but we actually verify it in the field. Item E, there must be no signs of unraveling, buckling, cracking, or structural issues with the road beyond normal wear based on the date of paving and application of the sealant. The road must have a pavement condition index rating of at least 90 out of 100. Now, you'll notice those who have the paper in front of you, we've got the 90 in yellow, the yellow highlight. This is where you tell us if that is, is the standard you want us to utilize, or if you think we should have a different standard, if an 80 is good, if you want to go with a 95, that is a policy decision. We recommended the 90 simply because we think that that gives us a few years before we need to go back in and do maintenance on a road that we adopt, just as Dan mentioned earlier, that, that process of doing a chip seal or a slurry seal or a fog coat. But again, that is, while it's written, it, it's not a hard number, so that, that is flexible based on your desire. F, the offer to dedicate the right-of-way must include a survey and a plat of the survey, prepared and certified by a registered New Mexico land surveyor, and must meet the minimum standards for land surveying in New Mexico as amended. The persons offering the property for dedication shall pay for the entire cost of the survey and the plat.
So Stephen, just on that one, and if it's further down, I apologize. So we have a lot of plats that were done on subdivision, private subdivisions, maybe seven, 10, 20 years ago. Is there a timeframe that we're wanting that survey of the, of the roadway and the plat to be done?
I'm not sure that, do they, I mean, they do change. Good question.
As we've seen in some private areas that people are building rock walls and public right-of-ways and so on and so forth. So I would just probably recommend that we put a timeframe on that.
Sir, they would have to, they would have to dedicate that right-of-way to us, so a new survey would be required for that dedication.
Wow, okay, perfect. Can we make sure that we highlight that in detail on F? Or make it an F.1 or F.2, whatever?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So noted, and we will also clarify there that that offer to dedicate the right-of-way shall be at no cost to the county. Just so that that is also very clear.
Okay.
Item G, the number of homes and businesses fronting the roadway, you'll notice that's also highlighted. And, and that is again, that question of, do you want to adopt a long, what is essentially a long driveway to a very expensive home just because they want the county to maintain it? Or do you only want to adopt private roads that benefit a greater good? And if so, what standard do we want to utilize for things that are not connectors between other roads? And then that kind of ties to number H there, or letter H, where, where we've got down the roadway must currently be a school bus route. We like that notation. That is something that, that has been in prior resolutions. However, the county has no say-so on the school districts, and they do change their bus routes regularly. So I, I'm not sure i- if you want to continue that or not.
Hey, Dan, I got an easy question for you here. What's your recommendation for item G?
My recommendation is, is, I think it's more of a feeling, like the cost-to-benefit ratio. You know, if there's 30, 40 houses on the street, then it makes sense to me to have it paved. If there's just a couple of houses on the street, I, I don't see that benefit. But like a hard number, I really don't have. I think it's more like a, like a feel for that. And also normally when paved roads, paved, private roads, they, they come to us to get them taken over. It's because they need a lot of work. So normally that's what happens, is nothing gets said until it's out of shape, the, the road surface.
So, oh, I, thank you for that response. And as far as like the answer to the question of a long driveway going to a private home, I don't even think that's in consideration because we're not able to benefit one individual over the greater good of all. Even, even if we wanted to at this resolution, I think that would definitely violate some anti-donation questions and improving land for a sole individual. So I would definitely, I would definitely say that's probably not an option for us.
So I, thank you, Mr. Chair. With that being said, we will be bringing back a resolution to modify a prior resolution that the board approved that did just that.
Okay.
Because it is our recommendation that we do not do that as well, and that we take that money and use it for another project that was over budget.
Did I sign this resolution? Is my name on it?
Uh, I do not think your name is on it. I think it was right before you got here.
Daisy's telling me no. I'm going to go with you today, Daisy. Thank you. I was like, oh my God, I signed that.
And for sure, I can guarantee Commissioner Gamaros's name is not on it.
Okay, yeah.
Well, that needs one commissioner then.
And Madam Vice Chair, I don't know if yours is or not, but if it was, it was early in your tenure, and therefore you, you are free to claim you were not aware yet.
Okay, no, I, we definitely need to see that, so, I agree. But yeah, I think there needs to be a set number of homes that benefit, you know? And I hate to keep bringing up Tres Caballos and Firehouse, but there was dozens of houses on those roads that benefited from this. It wasn't, you know, five acre minimums or anything like that. That's something that I definitely cannot get behind, would be those, you know, several acre lots where we're paving a private road. I, I can't get behind that. So it'd have to be more of a densely populated area. I don't know how you want to frame that and/or kind of highlight that. But that's what my gut is saying, is that this needs to incorporate those homeowners, the underserved communities, the colonias that, you know, someone went in and put up 50 lots on a three-mile roadway. Like, that's where this needs to come into play, not, not the big sprawled, sprawling communities. Commissioner Gamaros, you were going to say something?
Yes, so this resolution, from what I'm reading, it has to do with only private paved roads, correct? So if we could amend that resolution to say a resolution on adoption of private paved roads, because private roads means to me all private roads. I would like to just have that stating that, just having it being distinct.
Okay.
So on the, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Gamaros, on the title, the reason for it not saying paved is because on the next part, part two, that's where the county might adopt unpaved roads because of the greater good benefit that we mentioned earlier, because of emergency access connectivity and things like that.
So then I take that back until we get to that, but since we just got the document, I'm sorry, I'm just going along with what you're reading.
Right, right. Not a problem.
Well, and also how, what the Roads Initiative for, a lot of these private roads that we're paving for utilities are unpaved, correct?
That is correct.
All right, that makes sense. I agree. Cool.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes, Vice Chair.
So just bear, bear with me on this one, but I understand that legislators have money to appropriate, appropriate to their constituents' roads, so on and so forth. So should we maybe add something in there? Because let's just say there is a road out there, and one of the legislators appropriate, appropriates a million dollars, let's say, to a private road that the county doesn't want to accept, what do we do?
So, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, uh, thank you very much for bringing up a very problematic situation that we have had. The county just had to give back money to the state because of one of those at the end of June, because what had been asked of us was simply not feasible. The, a- a- and then we, we also had to ask for two, two roads that were, uh, funding was put in for by a legislator to be retitled, so we could do something else with that, that appropriation. Because what had been asked for on those was to take all the floodwaters that were going into one person's house and send them into a neighbor's house. And we, and we simply can't do that, and, and it was a dead end cul-de-sac, so there, there was no other place for the water to go, and it was specific to paving. So this is a very real problem that you are mentioning. I'm going to pass it over to ACM Macias to kind of mention the discussions he's had with legislators on this very topic.
Thank you, ACM Lopez, Chair Sheldon Hernandez, and Vice Chair Chaparro. I think this goes back to the conversation that we started having at the beginning of the year when the, the legislators convened for their 60-day session. Wha- what occurs is that they are typically in a compressed timeline, that 30 or 60-day timeline, to take action. Many of them are meeting in community now during their interim committee meetings. But I think at the end of the day, it's incumbent upon us to us, for us to rally around the high critical needs in our community that we have deemed, and then be able to have those conversations. I think if we're taking a page from Commissioner Andrews, or County Manager Andrews's book, we'll lead with some love here, and we'll try to educate and inform the legislators so that they understand that if they are to send a million dollars to us where we have no ownership, and we cannot demonstrate that it meets conformity with any of the private road adoption criteria that is currently in effect, or any in the future, that we might need to look for another creative solution or understand how we got there. And so we're actively doing that right now with the legislators. We are currently in the works to meet with Senator Hamlin and her team in community to explain more about how the capital-outlay process works. Senator Hamlin had one, similarly with the City of Las Cruces. In fact, Ms. Maldonado, who is in the audience today, I believe, was at that one that day, and we continue to express what the goals are. For example, we just passed the ICIP as part of the, um, the one of 19 that we have that are the goals. Those remain our goals, and then we still have room for six more that might come up now between August and later this year as we start targeting capital-outlay goals together, is what I would say.
Did that answer your question, Vice Chair?
It did. Thank you.
And, and Chair and Commission, if I may, one other thing that's really critical here is that we are hearing year after year, the legislators, like, one of the senators is, is pushing back very directly across the state to all 33 counties, that because of these kinds of actions, counties and other local entities end up with billions of dollars of monies that sometimes they can't spend. And because we're not having those direct conversations on the front end, we, we end up running out the clock like ACM Lopez discussed, which perhaps there's another way for us to say, we just can't find a solution forward, so let us untie up this money so they can go back for other utilization at the state and maybe another county opportunity. Quite frankly, we'll try to look locally to see how we can do reauthorizations, but those are the kinds of conversations that I hope we can have going forward.
All right, Mr. Chair, just continuing on, the item A, I there, the landowners requesting the private road adoption must provide priority analysis, which includes estimated annual maintenance, lifetime maintenance costs, and other associated costs to the county. The road must be, must provide connectivity within the existing county road network. And due to increased value that results from the property being on a public road rather than a private road, a reappraisal of all properties shall take place as part of the adoption process. And that ties to the item right before we came up here with the assessor's office. If somebody's requesting a private road adoption, we would then notify the assessor's office so they could prioritize those homes that are for that reappraisal, rather than waiting for some other outside trigger.
Consider me triggered by that.
Yes.
Thank you. For the record.
So, so those are the criteria that we have put down for private road adoption in this draft. If you, anybody has any suggestions for, for different criteria? If there is a desire by the board to consider adopting at private properties owners' request an unpaved road, we would need guidance from you as to how and why we should do that so we can justify that appropriately in the draft. It's definitely staff's recommendation against adopting unpaved private roads outside of the criteria that, that are coming up when the county determines there's a need, simply because we don't have enough funding to take care of our current inventory. And we would need to be adding permanent expense to the county for staff as well as that ongoing maintenance of those. So until we can get to being able to maintain our current inventory, that is staff's recommendation. But we understand that you all are in political positions and may be getting pressure from other entities, so we, we do keep the door open for you. Not hearing any questions or comments then, I'll move on to item two, which is, when a private road adoption is at the request of the county, the Department of Public Works shall evaluate the need for the road to include public safety, connectivity to the larger road network, a cost-to-benefit analysis, and an economic benefit using the road rating worksheet, which is exhibit A. And again, I apologize, Vice Chair, we will get you this in writing shortly after the meeting so that you have, have these documents to look at. Based on that road rating worksheet, recommendation will be made to county management to include the estimated costs for land acquisition, road development, paving, and the benefits to be realized from adoption of the road. And it's only at that time, if county management's in agreement, that it would be brought to the board for consideration of adoption. So again, when it's the, the county's request in the resolution, it'll be, it's much simpler, but it is a two-page engineering evaluation of that road that you would be actually able to look at that has that detailed breakdown. Dan, anything else you'd like to add on it, or?
The only thing is on the cost-to-benefit ratio, I think we can come up like houses per mile, a generic one like that, that we can go by.
Okay. I think that would be beneficial, especially it would be. No. I like that idea.
I like that idea. So with number two, if, so here's the only like thing, putting on my like community hat on how residents might take that is I I understand, but I also don't want county staff to be the brunt of a lot of these like, oh, take over my road, this is why it would benefit the county to take over my road compared to a private citizen saying, hey, here's our, you know, I'm thinking of certain scenarios where they're gonna start approaching you and saying, well, will you please send out the Department of Public Works to evaluate my road for your benefit? I mean, so I wanna make sure that we're not having that. I think that clear as day, you have number one, which road adoption is at the request of the property owner compared to private road adoption is at the request of the county. If we can have just specific language in there, carry, I'm I'm throwing this your way, that just says, no, that's not how this works. Unfortunately, at your request, you are one. Just giving specific language, just uh, you know, hit the ball out of the park so we're not dealing with this. Dan, you and your team are not dealing with this on a daily basis because that would be my worry.
Mr. Chair. I would like to, I don't know, make some comments and ask some questions, so. Many of you were there last night at my first meeting with uh the residents of Vado and Del Cerro. And um a lot of the, what I kept hearing about the private unpaved roads was that a lot of people were stuck in their i- in in the roads because there's no um outlet, you know, exit, there's just one entrance. And so they feel like they're trapped and they can't get out, especially those that are around the canal area, right? So I would like to see how we can address that or, you know, with who or what we can come up with. Um, only I feel like that's a safety issue, e- especially what happened with the floods or let's say, God forbid, there's a fire and people have to get out and, you know, they're all jam packed in the front, somebody crashes and they can't get in. Um, my concern also is with EMS, you know, our police, you know, how are they gonna get into these roads? Um, you know, I I I don't want them to have an issue where like they're like, well, we can't get into that road because, you know, it rained pretty good, not a flood, but it rained so well that it's just saturated, um our vehicles are gonna get stuck, so then now we need a rescue, our rescue, to rescue. So, you know, I, these are things, I guess, like, you know, have come to light with this flood um that, you know, we have that issue, and I know like all parts of the county is different. In that area, we have caliche, right, um clay, mud, and tha- that stuff is just so sticky and so hard and you just um will s- will sink into it, so, you know, that's my, what I I think I just want to figure out, how can we deal with those type of private roads? Making sure that they have different accesses to uh get out of their properties.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Gamaros, uh that is exactly why the Public Works Department went after the Protect Grant, um that federal grant of two million dollars to study the road networks in the county and identify the locations that only have one way in and one way out, uh specifically for disasters. Uh, that was a a big part of the work that Insight did in helping us write that grant application was to to address exactly what you're discussing. Um, Dan and I talked uh about which road down there might be the most appropriate for us to look at from the county's side uh to adopt and pave uh in order to provide that access. Um, the reality is it's not gonna go in front of everybody's house, but it's wh- what we need to do is ensure that there is that additional way people can come in and and out uh of the neighborhood if they can at least get to that. And that also means that they're not having to worry about maintaining multiple private roads in order to get to just their house. So we we do have some ideas, um that is part of what we will be looking at proposing to the commission going forward here in the next few months for improvements to that area a- as we also look at the flood control issues. Um, the the reality is unfortunately, some of those homes are built in the bottom of a bowl and and there are no road paved or o- otherwise will ever solve the problem.
So I understand with what what you're saying with rains, correct?
Right.
So even putting, uh you know, some type of surface on top of that mud won't solve the problem?
If the the owners of the roads are welcome to do that. Um, I do that personally on the private road that I share with my neighbors. Um, we put in our own base course. Um, tha- and that's what they need to do and and I get it that it's not cheap, but it's also not terribly expensive if you shovel it yourself. Uh, it's, it is doable for most people, I think, um i- if they work with their neighbors. And it doesn't have to be at the six inches that we do for roads, e- even an inch of base course makes a difference on the caliche issue.
Thank you.
Four or three and four?
That is three and four. Thank you very much.
Timeline, wait, pause. Come back, timeline.
Yes.
Almost got away.
Sorry.
It it, so because we don't have a full board here, uh my recommendation is we go ahead and uh send the documents out to the full board uh and give everybody adequate time for any questions, uh any other suggestions that they might have. And uh we give all of August for Commissioner feedback, and then we bring this back at the second meeting in September for approval.
Guess now is a good time to tell you that Commissioner Sanchez and I will not be at the second meeting in September.
Okay, then uh either the first meeting in September or the first meeting in October.
Where are you going? Oh, you will not have quorum on the second meeting in September. I'm.
Alright, well, we'll figure that out later.
Commissioner Gamaros's luggage, it seems, um. We will have to figure that out then.
Okay.
Commissioner or um Commissioner, uh County Manager Andrews, we might have to either move that meeting or cancel that meeting, it looks like.
Sounds good, is that the big DC?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's a great opportunity, great.
Mm-hmm, so we're out. Cool.
Thank you.
Sorry, guys, but thank you. Now, oh, me, next up, we do have our presentation updates from Sunny five oh five on board outreach, bond outreach, B O N D, bond.
Thank you, Chair, uh Sheldon Hernandez and Commissioners Jonathan Macias, Assistant County Manager, and I'm supporting with the uh the bond outreach as part of the government relations. Before we turn it over to Sunny five oh five, we have Gabe Agos and Ashley Sterling from Sunny five oh five in the wings. I wanted to go and share a couple of key updates. When it comes to some of the ways that our uh community can get updates on the bond, keep in mind that we have gone fully live with the microsite. Right now, I'm just doing a quick Google search to share one of the ways you can go and find it. If you go to the main page, thanks to our IT department and working in conjunction with Sunny, the vamos doñana, uh twenty twenty-five bond info is prominently listed as one of our key uh navigations. Once you go here, si prefieres el otro idioma como español, puedes subir aquí esta opción. You can click the other language option in the top right hand corner, and it will go ahead and translate the the page. What's of biggest, uh I think, relevance for the community here is if they want to get connected or get involved, they have the opportunity to see all of the dates that we've received from the commissioners. It's broken down by districts, so of course Commissioner Sheldon Hernandez, your chair, you've got yours that are coming up. Your first one will f- will be on Monday, August eighteenth, then we go into District Two. Uh, there are gonna be a couple of ones that are co-hosted, so you'll see Commissioner Reynolds and Commissioner Chaparro are gonna be having their first this week in community jointly together uh at the Butterfield location, and then of course, we have Commissioner Sanchez. We'll work with Susie Cordero to get some of the updates because I believe he also has one scheduled for this uh weekend on August ninth. Uh, one of the big things to know is is as he's continuing to crop up, you will have presence by either an ACM or a or the county manager himself will deliver those dates to you. We've been shuffling them around and making sure they get assigned, um and making sure that you have anything you need in order to answer questions. Last thing is the deadline for our bond question is vastly approaching as County Manager Andrews reminded me, and we have a deadline to get that over to the clerk, so we will be meeting with our bond representatives to make sure that we have that language. I just wanna put that put that out there, and now I'll turn it over to Gabe and his team from Sunny five oh five.
Hey, thanks all, um and Jonathan, could you just give me a thumbs up if you can hear me?
Thumbs up.
Great, thank you very much, cool. Alright, well, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen and um good morning, um Mr. Chair, members of the commission, thank you so much for having us today. Um, today I'm gonna go through a couple of things and kind of go through kind of where we've kind of how much we've kind of hit the ground running in the past month and then kind of talk about of our our plan moving forward, just to continue to commi- to educate the community about um the the bond issue, and then um I would like to take you all through um the recommended PowerPoint presentation that uh members of the commissioners can use to um, you know, educate the community about the bond issue, so um I'll dive right in and of course, I'll stand for questions after my presentation. Um, so going through what we called Phase One, which was kind of when we got brought on the team late June, late July, um the focus was building a cohesive campaign identity um and communications infrastructure to set the stage for for broader public engagement. Um, we felt this was a very important step to take, um given that, you know, what we know about uh um about community outreach, voter outreach is that, you know, um g- getting people aligned around a bigger cause is um critical in um earning broader public support, so we developed um the vamos doña, the the vamos doña on a brand, um which included the logo, um entire color pa- palette, and really, our our focus here was having a clear, exciting, community-first uh community-first tone um and voice reflecting both rural and urban needs. Um, in collaboration with um the county staff that have been working on this, uh we've we felt that this was the um the right direction to go and 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 felt um that the iconography of, you know, the sun, that the mountains, that's ev- that's evoked in our um overall campaign logo, um would inspire, would inspire folks in the community to engage in the process with us and um, you know, give and share their feedback for, you know, how this bond, how these bond resources can be used. Um, we've also constructed a a full comprehensive messaging framework, um which had, which included uh core narrative, key messages and talking points for for specific audiences, um including, you know, rural residents, families, you know, the the business communities. We also collaborated with um county staff to on a um full FAQ, that that which you can see on um the microsite that um that ACM Macias just mentioned. Um, we've also been working hard to support the um county staff on building out a digital engagement infrastructure, so this first meant supporting the creation of a dedicated um go bond landing page on the county website that ACM Macias um just showed. That's very easy to get to, vamos doña.com. Um, we we're really hoping that throughout the next few months that this is a a main, a main hub for community education on on the go bond. So what you see on on the microsite today is really just kind of a starting point, knowing that we can add more multimedia and content as we go forward. Um, but really what we wanna do was, you know, over overview of proposed investments, you know, make sure that we're including clear language around um what residents can expect from the bond issue, um and also any FAQs. And then uh the 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 central uh um function of this microsite was that digital community survey, which um I have pulled up right here. Um, you can see that this is um, you know, a pretty easy to use community survey for folks. Um, but really, I think we're gonna get a lot of good information about um what kinds of projects um folks um think that we should be prioritizing with that bond issue, um, you know, ag- kind of get a base level of support for that. Um, so we encourage folks to continue um utilizing this survey and um we'll we'll continue to can be reviewing these responses and getting with um county management to, you know, see how we, how this, how the the data from the survey can ultimately inform um the the question that ACM Macias just mentioned and, you know, how we're continuing to 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 educate and um and rally the community around this, so. Um, and we've also created a a suite of public education tools that are ready for um the commission to 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 use to go out um into the public and and talk about this. Um, I'm gonna show one of those pieces today, that PowerPoint slide deck, which um looking forward to getting some feedback from the commission to make sure that it's um completely actionable for you all, but we've also supported um it the county staff in providing um some social media toolkits with sample posts and and branded graphics to um put on the Doña, Doña County social media pages. Um, two examples of that are 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 outlined here. Um, and then um this just in, breaking news, um we worked with the chair to um to author an an um an op-ed. Um, and we 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 were really excited to see that his op-ed got placed this morning um in Las Cruces Sun News where um he so eloquently talks about um how we can shape the future of of Doña County together. So if you haven't checked out the the Chair's op-ed, um please do, because it's it's a, it's a great piece, and I think it really shares exactly what we're trying to accomplish with this. So um let me speak a little bit to the road ahead, so um a couple of key moments really really happen, you know, from now until late September. Um, as ACM Macias mentioned, you know, you you are, you're you are hitting the ro- hitting the road in 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 next month, and we're looking forward to supporting you all with whatever is needed, if 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 we need visuals, if we need print materials. Um, those are all things that, you know, our team can do in collaboration with county staff. Um, really, the the key here again is to have people engage in the process, give feedback directly to you, and of course, promote and amplify that digital community feedback survey that I just mentioned. Um, we're also gonna be working with uh the with with county management to build out a go bond champions program, um that, you know, validators and ambassadors in i- i- in the community who can be champions um in their constituency groups for the bond issue. Um, I I've noted here all the meetings that we'll be attending um alongside you all this month, so we'll we'll be looking forward to seeing everybody um later this week um for the one, for the meetings on the seventh, the eighth and the ninth, and then um, Mr. Chair, I'll look forward to um seeing you on um the eighteenth in La Mesa for your meeting. Um, a a key part of continuing to um to educate the community around the the bond issue is um continuing our our focus on social media campaigns. Um, we're gonna be continuing to pitch in with county staff on videos and testimonials and infographics, and then um, you know, continuing to, you know, utilize utilize voices from from the community to um champion the 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 bond issue in the form of op-eds and articles um in 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 local newspaper, on on radio. Um, we're also looking forward to supporting staff to facilitate news appearances for um the county commission, for the county commission and management. Um, and also um working alongside staff on a potential radio campaign to um really educate folks and um make sure that we're getting a- as many people to those um community engagement sessions as possible throughout throughout the next few weeks. So that's where we're at in terms of um kind of the our our activity report and our plan ahead. Let me just show you, let me just highlight this, um our our PowerPoint presentation that we've um created for your usage, and um I wanna emphasize that this is a template that, you know, you you as the, you as commissioners know your communities the the very best, and if if there's pieces of content or things you want to emphasize in your individual um discussions with with your own community groups, um we're absolutely happy to make adjustments or or help out with kind of tweaking this template, so just imagine this as kind of a a base for that, but um in our view, we think it's really important that we're outlining that, you know, this is about the future, that 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 we're trying to, you know, speak to the challenges that exist today, um that anchoring the the go bond and and what we're trying to do as a solution, showing, you know, showing the community what are real, real benefits to them and giving them concrete ways in which they can continue to engage in the process. Whether it is by simply having a conversation with you with with you all and you you all passing that feedback along to um ourselves and 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 county staff, or by use utilizing that um digital survey. So um I think it's, we we think it's important that you start, that we start off this presentation with, you know, imagining the future, imagining in Doña County where every every child has access to inspiring space uh spaces to learn, play and grow, where rural and urban communities, once separated by distance, come together to so celebrate shared traditions, um and, you know, folks. And focused that this is the vision driving all of this, right? Building a stronger, more connected future for Donaña County. We know that we're trying to solve problems with this issue, right? I think people need to, I think folks need to be reminded of that, that while our community continues to grow, many of our beloved spaces and facilities are in need of enhancement, that we need more adequate infrastructure and community hubs, that we want to adjust, we want to enhance the fairgrounds because we know there's untapped potential for economic and cultural events and then really address aging community centers that need some support to meet the demands of today's residents. So and then what you all are proposing as a solution, we've just summed up in this slide, it's not about, it's not just about addressing today's gaps, it's about investing in the future, that what you all are envisioning for this bond is cutting-edge recreation facilities, upgraded community centers, and then a reimagined fairground space, rekindling that joy of the concert year is where maybe we're bringing more concerts, community events, fairs into that space, really hammering that point home that improvements aim to elevate every corner of our county, creating the spaces that unite us, which I think is a really important key point to this campaign. I think it's important to emphasize to residents in the community that with this, there will be real benefits to our community, for families, for individual communities, to foster connections, strengthen the fabric of our neighborhoods, for the economy, as we know, a lot of these suggested uses of the bond resources absolutely will have an economic development impact. And then for our legacy, investments in our county that will serve future generations, ensuring that pride in Donaña County endures. And we like this line, "Together we can create a county that we're all proud to call home, a place where opportunity, connection, and belonging flourish." And then really reminding folks that together we can go forward. This was a core point of the chair's op-ed from this morning, that this is more than an investment in buildings, it's about belonging, pride, and opportunity, and we can do it together. And I think reminding folks of that through this process will be very important. Finally, engaging with us, reminding folks that their voice matters and that there is a whole host of ways to participate in that community dialogue, whether it's by going to the website, vamostoniana.com, and participating in a community listening session, if it's going to the site to take that digital survey, there are so many ways for folks to interact with the process. And I think as you're going out into the communities this year for your own meetings, reminding folks of this, but also let's be open to being agile with any feedback that comes in, just anecdotally, on that one-to-one conversation basis, maybe you're going to be meeting with some key stakeholder groups, right? All those, I mean, all that feedback is really helpful. I think it'd be the most effective to get that feedback in one place through that digital survey. But of course, for the ones that myself and our team will be participating in, we'll be taking notes, we'll be there to help kind of capture any feedback and make sure that is passed along to county leadership for the purposes of the question and purposes of future messaging strategies going forward. So to sum it up, thank you. I mean, we've had a really, we feel like we've come off from the gate with a strong start, obviously, much more work to come over the next 30, 60 days in advance of that window where we really got to nail our messaging down. But overall, we really appreciate the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you. Did you have anything to add?
No.
Just sending her to. Okay. Cool. Commissioner Gomeroz? No? All right. So love the info packet. When will that be sent out for talking points and such, since we're in the middle of our community meetings?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, happy to send that out digitally this afternoon. I'll work alongside Mr. Andrews and the staff to make sure that gets out to you all.
Yeah, let's get that out as soon as possible because, do you have one tonight, Commissioner Gomeroz?
Friday.
Friday? Okay. Okay, also.
Chair, as you think about that, one of the things that I think that's relevant is that Vice Chair, the Vice Chair has a meeting, I think, coming up in the next couple of days. So you might need to get it out before Friday, I suspect.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to have that before my meeting, if that's possible.
We'll work with staff to get that out to you.
Thank you, Commissioner Reynolds, and I will have a joint meeting on Wednesday, 6 o'clock, Butterfield.
Great.
And for Scott, Scott, I'm anticipating some people that are Spanish-speaking, so we'll need an interpreter there, please.
Yeah, a little short notice, but we will figure it out and find someone good for you. Absolutely.
Thank you.
And something that I think we, so let me just log into it really quick. So going on to the Go Bond website, we have the About the Go Bond, Proposed Projects, Get Involved FAQs. We have the Spanish version of that site as well. And then we go into the survey. It's loading. So just FYI, if you click on the Spanish option, I just did that as well, thank you. If you click on Spanish, can actually someone share their screen really quick for us? Okay.
I can, if that's helpful, go in there right now.
Jonathan got it right now.
Oh, perfect.
You'll go to Go Bond and then go to Espanol and then go down to the quiz, the test. Yes. It asks you to sign into Microsoft with your account. You're probably already signed in, though. But I signed out of Microsoft and I opened it up in a new browser. And if you hit Spanish and then you go to the questionnaire, it requires you to sign in before filling it out.
All right, we'll log this as a potential bug because you're correct, it's logged in as Felipe's, so we'll take this feedback.
Okay. And then also just some other things that I think is missing that we really do need to get on here. We do have some FAQs, right? What is the general obligation bond? Why? How much? What will the money be used for? How much will this cost taxpayers? I know that Commissioner Sanchez already pointed this out a week ago. It's still not updated and we're in the middle of our community sessions. So how much will this cost me? We're supposed to get an infographic on there about home values compared to what is being paid for because $15 per month is based off of a home value of $385,000. So that really does need to be updated already. Also, we need information on how long the bond is, how it'll be paid for, what it's going to look like on your bill. I know that during our board retreat, we went over all those things of this is where it's going to be on your bill, this is a line item that it's going to look like. That needs to be on here because a lot of people aren't going to understand exactly, are they going to send a $15 check every month to the county? Who do they write it to? When really, it's on their property evaluation and it's going to be paid through their property taxes. How many years is this Go Bond? What does that money look like? There's just a lot of details that I think people are going to be asking us and it would be nice to be able to direct them to the FAQs, but I feel like the FAQs are missing. And then if you go to the Go Bond website, or the form to fill out, do you have any suggestions or needed specifics to your area? Number nine, great. Number 10, from what you know about the planned projects, is there anything else you would like the county to consider? So how many people have taken this survey so far?
As of last week, Chair and Commissioners, we had about 47 when we checked in, I think, on Wednesday, just to go down some of the other questions that you had in real time. The term of the bond that got confirmation from Budget Office would be for 20 years. The table, we did work in conjunction with the Budget Office and they did give us information on the detailed table, which will now work in conjunction with IT for posting. So that is in the works. It just came in after hours yesterday.
Okay. So I would also like to see a question, not a question because the questions are on the form, but when it's submitted at the end of every week or the end of every three days, the commission needs the answers to these questions so we know how things need to operate in real time, especially with our community meetings. And as we're getting calls, we can kind of say, hey, because we're not getting survey results every week or every so often, I mean, what's the plan there to get us the information?
We can put in our weekly reports that we're starting to roll out as well.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I have a question when you're done.
Yeah, go ahead, Vice Chair.
Thank you. So I'm having a community meeting tomorrow. And by the way, Scott, an interpreter has been procured, so don't worry about that. But I'd like the surveys in writing because some of the people in my district don't have computers. They're older people. It's going to be at the Butterfield Community Center where older people gather, the seniors gather. And so I'd like that the survey in both English and Spanish so that it may be filled out and picked up during the meeting, if you can get that to me.
Chair and Commission, I think one of the things that Gabe from Sunny 505 was posting is if there was any feedback for the actual slide deck. I know you might like a little bit more time with it, but is there anything initially that stood out that you wanted to provide feedback on? Because I think the idea was that that could be some of your talking points, as well as if the venue that you're presenting at has the capability, you could also present it. But I suspect your meetings are a little bit more dynamic typically, as we saw last night.
I mean, I think we just need more time with it. We're seeing a lot of this information for the first time today. So if we can get that by end of day, we can go over those talking points, make sure that they look okay, see if we have any questions, maybe have a sounding board for us commissioners that we can kind of go through how this is going to play out. So yeah, as long as we get that by end of day today, we can formulate some of those ideas and kind of come up with a game plan that suits us. And I agree with the written questionnaire, we should just be able to print it out and get those and collect them really quick and then we can just enter them in and get those survey results out because that's really easy. And maybe also a QR code that we can maybe put up on the wall, a couple of them at all the community meetings, to where they can just get it done on their phone while we're sitting there. Did that happen at all? Or never mind, different situation. But yeah, just we need many forms of collection because 40 in a week isn't a lot when we're talking about, you know, we need thousands and thousands of survey results. So that needs to be something we get done. So yeah.
And Mr. Chair, if I may, and I'm sorry, I can't see, so I don't know if I'm interrupting, but as you all recall, there was some survey done where community meetings were done about a year and a half ago and no representation was from my district at all. And money was spent with a certain company trying to get community feedback and it was only like 140 people, as I recall, from different districts. And so we have to be really careful with that. I would love to have thousands of responses instead of 140 and none from my district. So I don't know, I'm not a marketing person, so I don't know how we address that, but we will need thousands of responses, not hundreds.
Chair and Vice Commission, Vice Commission, forgive me, Chair and Vice Chair, the Vice Chair's, Chapada's points are well taken. I think from the same context, I do want to point out that within that similar timeline, we also mailed out many postcards prior to Commissioner Gomeroz's arrival here to District Two. And although our goal was to try to get that disconnected digital population, their responses, we didn't get very many high responses out there as well. So I think we're hoping to find the sweet spot and how we can be ambassadors with you alongside so that we can try to prompt for those surveys to be taken, maybe at the beginning of the meeting before you're setting up, like we saw last night. Because I don't want to say in a community where many people's method for connecting is their mobile phone, that we wouldn't be able to strike there and be able to get that information before some of these meetings go underway. And forgive me, ACM Lopez, I didn't mean to cut you off. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair. I can also dedicate from the PIO team side, we can purchase some digital advertising that's geo-fenced for each district to make sure that we are getting that targeted messaging in district by district. As you noted, not everybody in each district is as connected as necessarily other people, but I think it would ensure that we're getting at least the segment that is digitally connected.
Thank you.
The chair stepped out for a minute. Vice Chair, I know you don't see that. So Commissioner Gomeroz, anything you wanted to add as I stall and wait for the next talking point?
Thank you, county manager, but I don't have anything else to say.
Where are we at?
A pause.
Oh.
Final thoughts, Chair?
Oh, I have many. So also with this, I just want to make sure that we are putting out marketing information every single day about this from now until the vote. So, and this is probably for Gabe more. So Gabe, are you and your team kind of giving the county marketing material besides kind of talking points, like infographics, stuff for our social medias, like thoughts for newsletters, even newsletters like per district that we can go out, like how this is going to affect each district wide, like getting that feel from the community meetings so that way you guys can kind of take that narrative and take it to every community? Is that like in your plans of how to support county staff with this?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Absolutely. We have provided social media tools so far and also provided some information of kind of what a potential newsletter could look like, to your point. But we're also going to be continuing that over the next two months as well.
Okay. So with that social media stuff that you're providing the county, is it like the graphics, like how best word? Okay, so you're providing us finished graphics and stuff?
That's right.
Okay, cool. And then also within the social media kit and stuff like that, can you provide the commissioners some ideas on newsletters, what they would look like, how to kind of get that point across the best since you're NPR, especially for those Spanish-speaking communities, of what's really going to hit home with them?
Absolutely. We have a draft kind of structure of a newsletter that could be utilized, so we'll make sure to include that in the follow-up packet as well.
Awesome. Thank you. Anything else? Vice Chair, are you good?
I'm good. Thank you.
Awesome. Okay, well, thanks, Gabe and team, for joining us today. I think that's it unless, staff, anything else on that one?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that being said, I think that's the end of our work session today. So the time's 11:40 and we'll go ahead and adjourn the work session today. Thank you.